...services, is there anything that needs to be followed up? And to act as an intermediary if there is any issue with the vendor to find out what exactly it is. Maybe it's just a follow-up call, or maybe there's a real problem and we need to address that with the vendor.
Eric, thank you so much for coming and joining us today and explaining a little bit more about the program Wise and Healthy Aging. We'll be back.
Cooking? Washing greasy food byproducts down the sink? Yes? Do you like clogged and blocked sewer lines that might cause a spill in your street or home? No? Well, neither do we. So please use paper towels to wipe oils and grease from your cooking utensils and throw away all the greasy items into the trash can. Doing so will help prevent grease blockages and keep the sewage where it belongs, in the pipes, and help us protect the environment and you.
Really like...
An emergency can happen... at any time.
Earthquake!
That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools.
I can't believe it, it's an earthquake!
You're never too old to prepare.
Ah, get out of there!
Get the message? Be prepared.
Get out of the house!
And now it's time for another new segment of our Aging in L.A. show, Caregiver's Corner.
As a family caregiver, one of the biggest challenges is learning to manage our stress. Stress is what happens when we are overwhelmed, having more to do than what we can handle. And so we need to find a way to manage stress. But oftentimes, that's easier said than done, isn't it? So let me tell you a little bit about how you can work on it. First, you need to recognize it. Try and figure out what is it that sets you off? What is it that starts to raise your stress level? What are some of the signs that the stress is coming in? Is it because you feel more irritable? Because you cry a little easier? You snap at people? Or you withdraw? You need to recognize the symptoms so that then you can start taking some steps towards correcting it. Identify the sources of your stress. Is it that you feel you have too much to do? Perhaps you need to delegate some of those tasks? Perhaps you're not getting enough sleep? Perhaps you just feel you're not being understood? Or sometimes it's when you have to answer that same repeated question several times again. So how can you handle it? How can you reduce your stress levels? Think about things that you can do easily, like stepping out of the room, taking some deep breaths, just to catch yourself, collect yourself again. Get some oxygen back into your blood, which goes into your brain and helps you calm down. Perhaps even take a short little walk outside. Find ways that you can try to reduce your stress. Determine what you can and cannot change. Those things that you cannot change, you need to then find a different way to cope with them. But the things that you can change, even the smallest change, can make a big difference. You need to take action. If you identify that you need help and you don't take any action, that can be very detrimental to your health, your mental health, emotional, and physical. So make sure that you start to size up what and how you can make some changes that will improve the situation in caregiving. On the other hand, failure to take action can have all kinds of side effects too. It can bring on depression. It can affect your relationships, not only with the care receiver, but with the entire family. It can be very detrimental to your health. As we say, your mental, emotional, and physical well-being are very important. You may want to change the situation. For example, if the care receiver is taking the medications on their own more often than they should, the situation needs to be changed by you having movement of the medications somewhere where they are not visible. That way, they're out of sight and the care receiver no longer is thinking about taking meds constantly. Another thing you may want to look at is changing the perception of how you view things. If it makes you angry that someone is asking you the same question over and over again, change your perception and understand, it's the illness, it's not the person that's trying to be difficult. Change your response. Say, "Here's a few crackers to hold you until dinnertime. We'll be eating at 6 o'clock." Because to say to the person, "Don't you remember we always eat at 6 o'clock?", that's really not helping the situation. But the way you respond to it settles things down for everybody, and it makes for better quality of life for the whole family.
Now we're going to visit with Barbara Browning, a longtime Santa Monica resident, recently retired, who now volunteers for the Wise and Healthy Aging Program. Welcome.
Thank you.
Now, volunteering can be very satisfying, or sometimes so frustrating, but as a case manager with the local hospital here, you have seen how many needs there are with seniors.
Yes, and there definitely, there isn't a senior that doesn't have a need that I don't feel that we can address.
And that's very important, from basic transportation, how do you get the bus pass or to get to the doctor's appointment, to more serious issues, like making sure the medications are appropriate.
Yes, and sometimes people just want to be checked on, the security of sons and daughters, nieces and nephews that are busy.
And struck by how often seniors are living alone, and they need someone to help them.
There is, and that's a choice that they've made, that they want to remain in their home, and they want to remain as independent as possible.
Well, and of course, being able to age in place in your home is a great comfort to our seniors.
Yes, it is.
Now, delivering services to the home, things like checking on, I don't know, making sure the rugs are tied down, if there are grab bars in the bathroom facilities, these are all the things that you can help with, right?
Yes, definitely, and as we go into the home, we can identify things that maybe other people might not identify.
Oh, yes, indeed, and that's important. As a person starting up a program, are you relying on the contacts you've made over all the years to go and talk to people, say, "Come and join us for a conversation"?
Oh, definitely, and that's a good place to start, because people know you, and hopefully you have a reputation that they can trust. So that's really where you have to start, and then with the contacts that they have, it will grow.
Well, and it needs to, because with Wise and Healthy Aging, it is a community-based program, and Santa Monica is wonderful about that, because there is an existing sense of community.
Yes, it is, and people in certain neighborhoods know each other, but this also provides an opportunity that they have some privacy too, that they can manage, make a phone call, and get the needs met without contacting their neighbors or their families sometimes.
Well, I keep telling people, don't be embarrassed about asking for help. For example, having meals delivered is not a sin, it is not something to be embarrassed about, it's a service that is offered to our communities.
Yes, it definitely is, but to the older person, sometimes it's a sign to them that they can't do something.
Oh, okay.
So if they can be the ones that can initiate the phone call and do it through an outside agency, it's easier for them, often.
And it's important too for caregivers to have a resource, so they can bounce ideas off them or express their concerns.
Yes, and older people often are more receptive to outside suggestions to those within their family.
Yeah, because none of that family baggage.
Right, exactly.
Well, of course, and what I've found too is that some of our older volunteers, who may be candidates for these kind of services, are actually quite energetic and committed to their community.
Oh, they are, and the beauty of this is that you can be a member and you can be a volunteer also.
Oh, at the same time.
So you can reach out and yet receive the services yourself.
We're going to take a look now at the Santa Monica Governing Council as they have a discussion.
Number seven on our agenda, talking about some event or a potential open house in January of next year.
Okay, what comes to mind for me right away is to have maybe posters of different villages or different aspects of the program that people could actually go around and look at, and perhaps one of us could be at each station to talk about, you know, I don't know, we can think about the content of the posters. If we plan a short piece of time for some kind of presentation, we could have a little panel of maybe three members.
You might want to have some little keynote or celeb, you know, I don't want to say a celebrity, but it could be an official, you know, someone, an elected official, or celebrity, or somebody. Might be nice to help you get some, you know, promotions and getting some attention. I don't know who that would be, but...
Well, we could think about that.
Yeah.
Just, we just don't want to have too much of a program.
Yeah.
Too much, or we could have things at different times.
I think that's a great suggestion.
And now it's time to hear from Brenda Barnett from the Department of Animal Services.
I'm here with my little friend Fiona, who is a shelter animal that I have at home with me on foster care, and foster care for adult animals is one of our newer programs. So Fiona is seven to 10 years old, she's a perfect companion for the Seniors for Senior Program, and what's really neat about the foster program is not only is Fiona getting the home care that she deserves, but she also is gaining a little bit of weight, and I've learned some very neat things about her. She's house-trained, she likes to walk on a leash, she loves to sit on your lap, so, you know, when we have these little dogs out in foster care, we learn a lot about them that we can share with the adopters. The same thing is true for the kitties. Sometimes you'll have a kitty in the shelter who just seems like she's a little depressed, she's not paying much attention. You take one of those kitties at home, let it sit on a lap for a few days, let it get hand treats, and it's great, because when they come back, then they're looking for the person to pet them. So another way that you can help with it at the shelter is to take home some of these companion animals and let them stay with you for a few days, a few weeks, or a few months, and it expands the walls of our shelter without us having to build more shelter space. So we heartily recommend, and we're looking for help with this foster care program. You can get foster animals at all the shelters, it's a program that we're rolling out, we're starting at a couple of the shelters, and then it will start in all the shelters. So this is a great supplemental way. It's also a way to take an animal home, foster it for a little while, and if you happen to fall in love with your foster, then you can go ahead and adopt it. Now, that's not going to happen for me and Fiona, because I have other dogs at home, and Fiona probably wants to be the only dog in your life. So, you know, Fiona needs to go to a home where there's maybe one other dog or no dogs at all, and she'll be your best friend for life.
That's all the time we have for today's show, and I sure hope you enjoyed the new format. I'm Paul Peterson, and I hope to see you again for Aging in L.A.
Good morning, Los Angeles. This is the Los Angeles City Council meeting for Friday, July 8th. We meet three times a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at Los Angeles City Hall. We have remote locations in Van Nuys and San Pedro for individuals that wish to testify before council. You can view us at home, on Channel 35, or on the internet, lacity.org. We need 10 to begin our meeting, and we currently have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Mr. Reyes, thank you, Mr. Reyes is here. So we will begin. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Engler, Mr. Coretz, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosenthal, council member Zine, chairing today. While we wait for the additional members to arrive for our quorum, we'll begin with presentations, and we'll begin. Mr. Rosenthal, you have a couple of presentations and an introduction. Mr. Rosenthal?
Thank you very much, and good morning, everyone. Standing next to me, if they could come up a little closer, are distinguished visitors, colleagues from Germany. And joining me right now is Mr. Rainer Schillings, who is visiting from Germany. He's the publisher of TOP Magazine in Cologne. It is one of the most popular magazines in Germany, and he's here spending some time in the United States. Under his leadership, the magazine has grown in Germany to the largest city magazine by subscription, readership, and ad revenue. He's also joined by Mrs. Ivan von Parnluss, an associate of law firm, and Mrs. Anna Ray Raschke, Mr. Schillings from Germany. Excuse my pronunciation, folks. On behalf of the city, we welcome you, and we appreciate you coming to our great city.
Thank you very much, sir.
And we have a simple certificate to give you. It's not part of the formal morning presentations, but we would love to honor you and just say that the city council, that we support you very much, warmest wishes and hope that the two countries will get closer and closer as life goes on. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, Mr. Rosenthal, ladies and gentlemen, it's a big honor for me to be here, to get this beautiful award, and to stand here in front of you all. Since more than 20 years I come over... Since more than 20 years, I come over mostly here in the western part, here in the LA area. And during the years, I learn a lot of people and start in some very nice friendships. And so, I start to bring the people together from here to Germany and from Germany to here. And yeah, over the years, we had a lot of nice business contacts, we have a lot of beautiful culture contacts, we bring museums people together. Also, we do something in the German carnival, so we had also fun. We bring, I think, a lot of good ideas from America, from here, from California to Germany, and Wieswärze, from Germany to here. So, I have to say thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President, and Mr. Rosenthal, for this great, great honor. And I'd like to close with God bless America, and God bless our beautiful Germany as well, and God bless you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and welcome to the city of Los Angeles. And Mr. Rosenthal, you have a presentation now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, please.
We're gonna do LMU first, if we could. I'd like to talk about LMU and its new president. Come on up, David. I have no script here, where's this paperwork? Come on. Get going.
Come on, Mr. Rosenthal's staff, snap to it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. David Bertram is the president of LMU, and we're celebrating the 100th anniversary of LMU. It's one of the great universities, and I am honored to have it in the 11th district. Mr. Reyes knows it, he's been part of it, and at the campus there. It is on 142 acres. They offer 53 major programs, 57 minor programs for undergraduates, 31 master's degree, a doctorate degree, and 15 credential programs. There are nearly 5,700 undergraduate students, and more than 3,100 graduate and law students benefit from small classes, specialized travel abroad programs, and one of Southern California's most diverse student population. The 2009-10 freshman class included students from every state, and international students from the United Kingdom, China, Uruguay, Indonesia, Spain, and many others, including, of course, Germany. LMU's academic vigor and demand for excellence places it among the top producers of Fulbright awardees. Everything we do at LMU is designed to reinforce and support the work going on in the classrooms, the laboratories, the faculty offices, and in solidarity hours with scholars and students. It's incredible. They strive for excellence in academics, and that's why we're here. We're welcoming David to us. This is, by the way, the first non-Jesuit priest to run the university, and he is a lawyer, and he worked in the legal department as well as a support person. I had the pleasure of getting to know him over the master plan of LMU. Mr. Reyes was involved with it as well. LMU is doing a $1.3 billion, 20-year renovation, modernization of the university. The students, there'll be more students living on campus, there'll be more facilities to work with. What I loved so much about David is his work with the community on issues that were important to the local neighbors. He sat in meetings, he discussed meetings, he worked with the community. And I went to a town hall at one point where there were 300 LMU graduates there who live in Westchester that had nothing but praise for your leadership and what the university had done for them over the years. So I firsthand have had the opportunity to work with him, and it is a delight and an honor to have him here today within a welcome certificate. But I'd like to give Mr. Reyes, my colleague, an opportunity to say a few words first.
Thank you, Councilman Rosenthal. Thank you for this invitation to be part of this presentation. It's with great honor that I can stand here before you and speak of LMU and Mr. Bertram. In the master plan process, what was very evident was the priority for students. The longer the process took, the less availability for resources for our students, and that was a balancing act that was demonstrated by the leadership of Mr. Bertram. But even more important was the fact that they're trying to build an environment where more students, that reflects the diversity of this great region, can feel welcome there in LMU. When we look at what makes this city desirable, from a labor force point of view, from a skill sets point of view, from an education point of view, LMU is addressing those priorities through the way in which they're structuring their programs, the way they are creating their environment, and coexisting with the neighbors as a, not only a community-oriented university, but a university that has one of the largest Fulbright recipients, one of the leaders in the Southern California region. So I believe it's a treasure that needs to be celebrated, and we should be very happy and fortunate that it is one of the many universities that make up the greatness of our great metropolis. So I thank you, Mr. Bertram, for your work, for your university's 100 years, and your leadership, Councilman Rosenthal, for everything that's been happening up to this point in making this a first-class university. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now we have Tom LaBonge, who loves LMU and has been engaged with LMU for many years.
Well, exactly, but my father went to Loyola in the 1930s. And I remember in 1961, my mother was ill, we were driving down Sepulveda, it was before the freeway was built, and we passed Loyola, and my uncle Bernard said, "L-O-Y-O-O-O-L-A, L-O-Y-O-O-L-A, go Loyola." Loyola Marymount has been part of our community, and what makes it so strong is the great University of California at Los Angeles, USC, Loyola, Occidental, Cal State, Northridge, Chapman College, Irvine, all of us, this great Long Beach State, all of it is so important. Cal State LA, my school, but I wanted to salute you and honor Loyola, and especially the School of the Study at Los Angeles, which is so important. And if we are to achieve our goals as people, we must count on our universities and colleges to help us in the thoughts. Just the other day, Mr. Reyes was talking about outreach to people, to make sure everybody gets the same type of outreach and response in government. And I thought to myself, we need to call some university and say, "Look, take that as a project. We need to work with universities on the LA revitalization, on tourism, on noise abatement, and all those other things."
That's right.
So I join Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Riz, and all the councils to salute you, and all of Loyola. Good job, David, good job.
Thank you very much.
A special hello to Father Pat Cahalan, one of the greatest priests in all of the world. Thank you.
And David, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we all signed it, the mayor, everybody else, and it's called "Congratulations and Welcome to Our Great City as the President of LMU." Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy.
Do a plug for recruitment now.
I think most of it has been said. This will be very brief. I will say the following: We are in the middle of our centennial year celebration, 100 years of service to the students and the community of Los Angeles. The Jesuits have a very powerful pedagogy, and that is education of the whole person, which means that we strive at LMU and the undergraduate schools to make sure that students have the opportunity to integrate the intellectual dimension of their lives with the spiritual, the social, psychological. That, we think, produces men and women for others who have a strong sense of giving back to the community, and that's what we're going to continue to do. I pledge that we will work with the city. We are very gratified to be in the best city in the world. People ask me, "What will the world look like in 100 years, after the next centennial?" And I say, "It will look like Los Angeles looks today." We are living the future, we have a responsibility to make sure we make the most of that, and we at LMU are committed to partnering with you, the city, and all the other agencies and constituents to make this even better place to work and to live. So thank you again very much, City Council.
Mr. Cardenas, comments from Mr. Cardenas.
I just wanted to thank the president of Loyola Marymount University. I wanted to thank him so much for his leadership. When you became the president, you afforded those of us who are elected officials in this city to meet with you and get to know you, and I just want to say that I'm very pleased to know that they selected someone to run that university who is willing to speak up for everybody in this very eclectic community called Los Angeles and beyond. And I just want to thank you for your leadership and your willingness to understand that when you are a university, when you're a place of learning, you are a beacon of truth for a community, yet at the same time, you have to be that truth. And I believe that you bring that to this university. It's been there, but you're going to make it stronger, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Our next presentation, CD4, Mr. Tom LaBonge.
Let's give a big hand for Chief Jimmy Hill, LA City Fire Department, huh? Good job. Thank you. And also, it's my honor to introduce the acting chief, interim chief, Chief Cummings, Brian Cummings. Give them a big, warm welcome, just appointed by the mayor.
And Mr. LaBonge, there's a number of firefighters in the back, if they want to step forward also, a number of inspectors.
Yes, I'll join as well.
Come up and join Chief Hill.
Good job. The wonderful thing of life, you never know how you end up. I'm standing here today, in like 1972, I was working at a print shop down on Coinga in the summer, '72, '73, and a friend of the family was working at the firehouse down the street at 27th. And I went down to see my friend, and I met Jimmy Hill was a rookie. And I used to spot him because he would be the second person on the tiller of the tiller truck that used to teach him on the back of the tiller. So here we are, 35 years plus later, and honoring you for this as deputy chief for the city of Los Angeles. And not only that, he was the fire marshal. And the fire marshal's role is to make sure it's safe for everybody, whether it's in earthquake preparedness, whether it's in the development of housing, he's key to our safety. So he's truly an angel in the city of angels. Jimmy holds this rank in the fire department and is the chief of the Bureau of Fire Prevention and Public Safety. In October of 1966 to 1970, Chief Hill served in the United States Navy as a second-class petty officer. And in April of 1970 to July, after leaving the Navy, he worked at the Veterans Hospital as patient care technician, and further was employed by the United States Postal Worker as a letter carrier. Then, the great opportunity came on July 22nd. Chief Hill joined the fire department, and his 38-and-a-half-year tenure included the rank of apparatus officer, apparatus operator, AO, is that called, right, okay? Inspector, captain, one battalion chief, and most notable, the city fire marshal. Chief Hill has improved and supervised coded enforcement and oversee major new construction projects such as the Convention Center, the Central Library, LA Live, and the Metropolitan Transit Authority, and all of their programs. Chief Hill consisted with the fire department's mission to preserve life and property, promote public safety, and foster economic growth. Every day, Chief Hill represents the Bureau of Fire Prevention's cornerstone for public safety, for firefighters, and for the public. Chief Hill's national memberships include the National Fire Protection Association, the International Association of Fire Chiefs, the International Wildland Urban Interface Policy Committee, and a host of other committees and national organizations to help educate and inform those in the profession of firefighting. Additionally, Chief Hill is immediately past president of the International Fire Chiefs Association in North America, and as soon as a commissioner of the California Building Standards Commission. Chief Hill's personal mission and statement consistently has been, "I endeavor each day to do the things that are right rather than do the things that are popular." And Chief Hill has been married to his lovely wife, Lucille, for 40-plus years, and they have three beautiful grown children and six grandchildren as well. Now, therefore, by adoption of this resolution, with the great seal of the city of Los Angeles and the tall grand city hall on the upper left corner, signed by the mayor of Los Angeles and all the council members, hereby proclaim greatness served by the people of Jimmy Hill for the people of Los Angeles, and present him this commendation for 38-and-a-half years of service. Let's hear it for Jimmy Hill! Before I call out Chief Hill, I want to have Chief Cummings say something on behalf of the fire department.
The Fire Prevention Bureau, Los Angeles City Fire Department, takes a large part of the credit for Los Angeles being the safe city it is, and a few fire fatalities that we do have here for a large metropolitan area. Preserving lives and property, promoting public safety and economic growth here in the city, a large part of that mission is accomplished every day by the fire members, the men, women, sworn and civilian of the Fire Prevention Bureau, and that's a bureau that Chief Hill has led so ably for all these years and put us into the, truly into the 21st century as we move forward. As you step out on the 17th floor where our Fire Prevention Bureau is housed, there's a sign that says, "Intelligent people solve problems, geniuses prevent them," and that's their mantra. They're looking for ways to prevent those catastrophic events that can happen in each of our lives and keep us safe. And again, Chief Hill has piloted that and inspired his people and motivated them as he's moved forward. And his retirement, he leaves a very, very able bureau that'll continue that mission in the city of Los Angeles. And as the chief of staff of the city of Los Angeles, I want to extend the thanks, the heartfelt thanks of all the men and women, sworn and civilian, and volunteers for this great organization for that 38-and-a-half years of service. Thank you very much, Chief Hill.
Here we are, Chief Jimmy Hill.
Thank you. This is a proud moment for me and my family, as I have reached the apex of my career, 38 and a half years in service to the city of Los Angeles and to the Los Angeles Fire Department. This has been one incredible ride. And like Councilman LaBonge says, from the tailboard rookie to deputy fire chief and fire marshal for this city, has been an enormous climb, and I've enjoyed every step along the way. Additionally, I have enjoyed my staff, many of which are behind me now, are the inspectors who every day carried out the mission to protect and serve the public here in the city. My immediate staff, my secretaries that served with me, my battalion chiefs, there was never no, there was always the day that they would commit to anything that I wanted to do and endeavor to accomplish it in a manner that I would be pleased. I'm so proud of their development and their leadership in carrying out the mission every day. I'm also proud of my family who's here to support me today, my wife, Lucille, my daughter Jennifer, my daughter Chandra, my sister Joyce, and my nephew Malcolm. Once again, thank you for allowing me to be a part and to serve the citizens of Los Angeles.
Chief, we have some comments from Mr. Reyes and Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Reyes first.
First, I just want to stand and say thank you for your hard work. We've had several challenges over the years, and I appreciate your professionalism, your honesty, but more importantly, your will to find a solution. Sometimes it's easier to say no, or to walk away from difficult and delicate situations, but you took it head-on. You look at me in the eye and say, "This is what's real, these are your possibilities, these are the options," but you always looked out for the city first, and that was most significant, I believe, in any civil servant. So I want to thank you for your hard work, your dedication, and I can mention to your family, I want to thank them for sharing you with us throughout the career, because I know what this does in terms of the stresses on the family, and to be able to be here and acknowledge them, be part of this great celebration, means so much, and I thank you for that.
Mr. Rosenthal.
President, you've served as the chief fire marshal for all of us, and boy, do we worry about fires all the time, at least my constituents in the Palisades and Brentwood and the Canyons do. We also worried about the San Bruno pipe explosion that happened, and we want to thank you for your leadership. You've been an incredible leader, you've been a motivator, you've been a positive spirit, and by seeing all of the officers around you, all of the men and women from the fire department, that shows again the kind of leadership you've been. Sorry to see you go. Onward and upward. Thank you for all you've done for all of us. Bless you.
And Chief Hill, I want to offer my congratulations to you. It's been an incredible career, I know from the LAP I know from the LAPD side, the fire side, dedication to public service, and you and your family should be very proud of your accomplishments. And your colleagues standing behind you show a lot of love and support for all you've given to the City of Los Angeles for all these years. God bless you and the future endeavors. Best to you, Chief. Mr. Labonge.
Yes, Chief Hill, I just want to let you know, Dennis, 38 years, Los Angeles Police Department. He made fun of me because I took the test at Hollywood High in 1974 for the fire service, but I didn't pass. And then he made a lot of fun of me, but I told him, "LAPD takes anybody," and that's why Zion's there for all the...
Proud of that. Thank you very much.
Let's have a big hand for Chief Jimmy Hill.
Yeah, Jimmy Hill. Congratulations, Chief Hill. Our next presentation, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Rosendahl.
Appreciate this opportunity. Kind of running around a little bit, as you could see, first the major publisher from a major newspaper in Germany, then the President of LMU. And this is a lot more personal and a lot more unbelievable on many levels. Standing next to me is Mark Antonio Grant. Many of you know Mark. He's been in the government in various ways for many years, and I've had the pleasure of having him as a special assistant. Less than a year ago, Mark Grant came down with cancer, colon cancer. He had chemo treatments due to the colon cancer, and he decided to run in the LA Marathon. Mark is an incredibly energized, engaged guy. If you might recall, when he ran in the marathon, it was the worst storm we had in the history of the LA Marathon. The cold and the rain combined with his blood being thin due to blood clot medication. Mark began to suffer severe leg cramps by mile seven. It was at that point that he knew he would no longer be running the marathon but would be walking the distance. By a mile 11, the rain and cold being so severe on his body, he stopped at the water station to ask for a garbage can liner to serve as protection. The attendants staffed by volunteers from autotraders.com noticed that he was not only very cold and wet, but in addition, his hands were nearly white from hypothermia. They gave him one of their company shirts to help him dry himself off and convinced him to get into one of their vehicles to warm himself up before continuing. After 20 minutes, as Mark chose to continue with the race, the woman who had volunteered team leader called his name. Mark turned to see a gentleman run toward him. The man took off his coat, telling Mark that if he intended to continue, he should at least be warm and dry, and gave Mark his jacket. He gave him his coat off of his own back. When Mark asked how he would go in to return it, the man said the important thing is that Mark be warm, dry, and in good health. What was important was that if Mark was determined to finish, he and his crew wanted to make sure that Mark was safe. So, Mark walked the final 15 miles with his coat on and finished the race. The following week, Mark's wife Eileen, where's Eileen?
Come over here, Eileen.
By the way, I had the privilege of performing as the minister of the marriage of Mark and Eileen, which was two months ago, folks, on the 7th. Congratulations, you reds. The following week, Mark's wife Eileen tracked down the volunteers by contacting the corporate Autotrader office, which in turn reached out to the basic located, their main location in Brea. They had been wondering if he made it all the way and were happy to find that he did. The woman who called Mark's name, Valerie Para, where's Valerie? Valerie, bless you, was one of the leaders of the volunteers and also the wife of Michael Para. Where's Michael? There's Michael. The man who gave Mark his coat right off of his back. They did what they did, not because they might receive any sort of recognition, but because they saw another human being felt they could help him in his quest to compete in effort that many folks wouldn't even try. It was human compassion at its finest. So, I just want to acknowledge Mark. God bless you, brother, for that. And I'd like you to say a few words, my hero. Just a second. With your love for children, with your lovely wife.
I'm honored and humbled to be here. I thank you, and I'm glad you finished the race.
Me too.
And wow, I don't know what to say. Thank you.
You have something?
Say something, Mark. Go ahead.
I just want to say, a lot of us, it's just the genesis was my getting cancer. And when you find out that you have that disease, it's one of the most horrific statements you'll ever get, the biopsy is back, it is cancer. Yet, I will say that I have been encountered with some of the most wonderful experiences, met some of the most beautiful human beings as a result of it, and this is definitely one of them. And these folks, they definitely took care of me. They made sure that I was going to finish, and they are representative of what the City of Los Angeles is about and what human nature is all about, and I can't thank you enough, except, Nate, we have something for you. Michael?
Your jacket back.
This is the jacket this gentleman gave you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. We have one final presentation, CD six, for a presentation. Let's do the roll call on the agenda, and then, Mr. Cardenas, one moment, we'll do the roll call and agenda.
Alarcon Cardenas, Englander Hahn, Weezar Kaurian, Labonge, Parks Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Wesson, Zion Garcetti, 10 members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
First item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes, second by Mr. Kaurian.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Mr. Englander, second by Mr. Alarcon.
Mr. President, item one on the agenda is an item notice for public hearing. There is a request from a council member to continue this item to July 29th.
That opposition, continue to the 29th of July, number one.
Item two is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Number two, take the roll. You want that special? Anybody wants special on number two? Seeing none? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Excuse me, 10 ayes.
Next item, please.
Items three through eight are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Any specials, three through eight? Mr. Englander?
Item five.
Number five, special for Mr. Englander.
Mr. President, we do have cards on items three, four, five, six, and seven.
Let's call those special. So, all we have is number eight, then? Number eight, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved.
On the continuation agenda, items nine and 10 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Nine and 10?
For item 10, a substitute ordinance has been circulated. I believe an amending motion is forthcoming, so you may wish to hold that one.
Let's hold number 10. What about number nine? Mr. Alarcon, on number nine, that was your matter?
For number nine, a motion is required.
You want to call that special, Mr. Alarcon? Let's call it special. Mr. Alarcon, you want me to just call it special?
Yeah, we called it special.
All right, let's call number nine special. And number eight, forth with Mr. Clerk.
Very good. Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or public comment, not on today's agenda, and you do have one remaining presentation.
We've got Mr. Cardenas for presentation, and we'll go on with the agenda. Okay, Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to invite Jose Cornejo and his family to come up, and also the staff of my office, Council District Six, and my members of my family who are here as well to come up for Today, I have a very special opportunity to say thank you to someone who has served the people of Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley and the people of the state of California in the capacity of Chief of Staff for the State Assembly for six years, and now here on the City Council as a Chief of Staff for eight years. And that's my good friend, Jose Cornejo. Jose Cornejo started working for me as a Chief of Staff. He wasn't my receptionist. He wasn't my policy director. He started off his first day working for me when I got elected to the State Assembly in 1996 as my Chief of Staff. At that time, he was about 30 years old, and...
20.
28. Now, I know. I promised them I wouldn't hire somebody under the age of 30, and somehow, he made me believe he was 30. No. When he was 28 years old, which made him perhaps the youngest, certainly one of the youngest Chief of Staffs in the state Capitol amongst the 120 Chiefs of Staffs for the State Assembly Members and State Senators. I mention that to you because I got a lot of grief from some of my colleagues, some people who thought they were telling me what I needed to hear, some people who thought that they knew better, and they said, "You know what? He's a nice young man, but perhaps he can be your policy director. Maybe he can start off in another capacity. You really should hire this person who's perhaps twice his age or close to that to be your Chief of Staff." And I would always say, "No, he's going to do just fine." I knew that at the time, probably his best skill was to write a great constituent letter. And for those of you who aren't in politics, that's just one of the basics, that everybody who works for an elected official, you got to learn how to write a good constituent letter. He hadn't been a Chief of Staff before. He had never been an Assistant Chief of Staff. But what I saw in Jose Cornejo was a lot of potential, the potential to become a great Chief of Staff, and he has been. And what I saw in him was the fact that he came from a good family, the fact that he was hardworking. And more importantly, not only was he hardworking, how did he learn how to be a hardworking individual? Through his parents, through humble people who came to this country from Sacatejas, Mexico, not exactly Jalisco, but close, who came from Sacatejas, Mexico, and came here and made a good life for themselves and raised a fine group of young people with his sister and his younger brother. And he certainly did a fine job for me, receiving accolades from speakers and pro temps in the state legislature. There were times where they wouldn't invite me to give them advice, they would invite my Chief of Staff, Jose Cornejo, to give them advice, which was just fine because it was good advice, and I didn't take it personal because to this day, Jose Cornejo is probably one of the sharpest political minds in the state of California. And you're probably wondering, well, why did he go from a Chief of Staff in the state legislature? He must have lived in Sacramento. Yes, he did. When I got elected to the City Council, I asked him if he could please, please help me set up my office here in the City of LA, and he did. And I asked him to please find me a Chief of Staff, which he tried, he really did. But I sweetened the pot by saying, "You know what, Jose? I know you, and I know you want to start a family someday, and what a better place to do so than Los Angeles. There's a lot of wonderful, beautiful, young Latinas in Los Angeles that I'm sure would like to get to know you." And little did I realize, he did much, much better than I thought. He married Lupita Sanchez. And as has been said to me many times, my wife, thank God my kids look like her. I've been told, "You know what, Tony? Your kids are really good-looking. Thank God they look like their mother." He's now been blessed with Esteban, a beautiful son, and Alexis, a beautiful daughter, and he is now an Angelino through and through. Jose Cornejo moved here about 10 years ago, bought a home, met a beautiful woman, got married, started a wonderful, beautiful family, all the while, working 60, 70 hours a week as my Chief of Staff. Today's a very bittersweet day for me. It's a day that I say thank you to someone who served the people of Los Angeles so well, but on a personal basis, someone who has become my personal friend, not just a confidant, but my personal friend, and someone who has protected me and who's looked out for me, has taken bullets for me, and someone who will continue to do so, because he still emails me every day with things whether I want to know about it or not, but that's what Chiefs of Staffs do. They look out for you, they tell you about things, they make you read things that perhaps you're not in the mood to read, and he continues to do that, even though that's no longer his direct responsibility. But he does it because that's the kind of person he is. He has a big heart. He's a tremendous individual, and he's changed me a lot because whether I like it or not, I look at things with a political lens more than I care to. But unfortunately for us elected officials, whether we like it or not, we have to. We have to. But there's one thing that I'd like to say, a little bit in jest, is that when I met Jose Cornejo, I never seen him shed a tear of emotion. But I can promise you this, lately, he's given a few speeches, and I guess I've grown on him. Because he has, he has learned to realize that maybe a little emotion isn't all that bad, especially when you care so much about so many things, and when you have so much to give, and you give a lot in everything that you do. So, with that, I'd like to say thank you to Jose Cornejo on behalf of myself, my staff, the City of Los Angeles, for 14-plus years of service as my Chief of Staff and as somebody who's given 110% every single day that he has come to work. So, with that, I'd like to give this resolution to Jose, but first, I'll allow him to say a few words.
You, I've spent nearly 15 years working for Tony. There was a time between the legislature and the City Council that I actually worked for Herb Wesson. But I think I did more work for Tony because he's always calling me to ask me for something. So, it's a, it's a real change. But this year has been a year of a lot of change for me. About two and a half months ago, I lost my father, who, as you can tell, I still miss But he taught me a lot of things about hard work. He taught me a lot of things about loyalty. He taught me a lot of things about caring. I never was afraid to tell my dad anything in my life. What the last two years that he's been pretty sick got me to realize is that that's the kind of dad I wanted to be, that I want my children to be able to hug me and kiss me at any time they want, because I did that to my dad, and he never said, "Get away, I'm busy." He always accepted that. My mother is here, who has been the rock of our family, the lady who taught me about so many things in kindness, a woman who's a... A woman who's the treasure of my life. Tony was right. Two days after coming to work for him at City Council, I was standing right over here by the ropes, talking to another Chief of Staff, when I said, "Who in the hell is that?" And in walks my beautiful wife, which was my wife yet. And I had to wait three years to go on a first date with her. But it was... Three years were worth it. Lupita has been a source of so much knowledge and a source of friendship, and, you know, we're both political people. I married someone that's very political. On election night, we both sit in bed with our laptops checking out election results across the state. So, checking out things. So it's been, you know, she's a great partner in my life, someone, and she's given me the things that make me the happiest, my two children, Esteban and Alexis. And I can't say thank you enough for that. But I want to get back to the professional life, that this new chapter for me. Working for Tony, I got a lot of opportunity. He gave me a lot of leeway. He gave me a lot of ability to do a lot of things and to explore new things. And the only thing he ever asked is, "Let me know when I'm about to be broadsided." And so I'd come back and say, "You know, I think I did this, and I don't know what's going to happen." And, uh, you know, you may get a call from the Speaker, and he did. And he may get a call from the pro tem, and he did. Or you may get a call from the Council President, and he did. And, uh, but there was always times he allowed me the freedom to be able to look at things and take and organize. And it's a great friendship. But I, you know, I've got to tell you that it's a friendship that... He was my roommate in Sacramento, and when I first moved down here, I lived with his family for the first four months. Norma, who has been a great friend as well, and I've got to tell you, encouraged me in so many things, and really was the one that turned to Tony and I in the living room and said, and she used these words, "You idiots? What do you mean you're not going to be his Chief of Staff? You guys know each other." And so, really, Norma's the one that ultimately really pushed us to do this. And I can't thank you enough, Norma. I can't thank you enough for your friendship as well. And, you know, her kids, their kids are people I've known since little kid, and so, since they were tiny. So let me just say the final thing. This city is a magnificent city. I'm a Los Angelino by choice, not by birth. And it's a city that has so many great things going for it. It's a city that has its problems like we do around the world, but it's also a beautiful place. It's such an eclectic, ethnic collection of people. Whether you want to go and experience the world, you have to travel 20 miles to experience every corner of the world here in L.A. And when you look at that, what a fantastic city we are, we ought to all be proud to call ourselves Angelinos. And as I leave here, where you're able to change government and do those things from my perspective, I ask all of you to care for our great city, to care for its workers who picked up my garbage this morning, to care for all the people that make this city function, and to say to you, "I love L.A. Let's keep L.A. great." Thank you.
Well, Mr. Cardenas, we have, um, colleagues that wish...
I apologize. I did something that I really shouldn't have. I forgot to thank the people that have made my ability to do everything so great, is all the staff we've hired. In the time that I've been Chief of Staff, we've had about 120 staff people, and everyone has brought their eclectic collection of abilities. And I would not have been able to, and Council would have never been able to do some of the things that he wanted to, had it not been for them. They are a fantastic group of people, and of all the things that I'll miss in City Hall, I'll miss them the most. So, thank you.
Mr. Englander, followed by Mr. Weezer.
When I started in this building, I heard that there was this young Chief of Staff that was... That'd come down from Sacramento, and I should try to learn as much as I can from him. And I was just now, my first time ever working for an elected official at the time, for Greg Smith, eight years ago, and I heard this young Chief of Staff. It was... I was happy to learn that I wasn't... I was still going to be the youngest Chief of Staff in City Hall. So you were young at the time. I was younger. Just had to get that in there.
Yeah.
But then I got to know you, Jose, and you became such a great friend and mentor to me. And you really taught me a lot, not just about policy and politics, but how to run a staff, how to care about people. And for many years, and I'll continue to say this now as a Council Member, that you're only as good as your staff. And it starts with the Chief of Staff, and it goes from there. And I know that Tony Cardenas has trained the best. And because of that, I was able to steal away John Lee, who is our Chief of Staff, who got his start with you, with Jose, working under you guys, and learned a lot. And now he's my Chief of Staff, and I'm really proud of that as well. But you taught me a lot, and I'm really grateful. You have a beautiful family. I've known Lupita for many years. To see you both together, when I first heard that you were dating, I was blown away and said, you know, I couldn't have picked a better couple, a City Hall couple, to get together. It was fantastic. The wedding was beautiful, and then you've made beautiful children. So you only have great things to come from that. But I'm really proud of everything that you've done and accomplished, but more importantly, of our friendship. And I know there's great things to come ahead. I remember the first time walking into your house, you called and said, "Why don't you come over? We're going to have a friendly poker game." And I come over, and all these tables are set up, and it was, you know, it was supposed to be friendly. I think I lost a few dollars that night. Learned a lot that you know a little bit about poker as well and have a good poker face. But I think you've showed your real face and your true colors today, that you are a caring and passionate person that we all know. And I just want to say, "God bless you. Thank you for everything. You're a great friend, and good luck in all future endeavors."
Mr. Weezer, followed by Mr. Labons.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Jose, I wanted to just publicly thank you for all the advice that you've given me throughout the years. I actually got to know you many, many years ago when you were working in the state legislature. I had finished up my Assembly Fellowship, gone back to graduate school. I went back to Sacramento to visit, and a few people were telling me, "You've got to meet this guy, Jose Cornejo. You've got to meet him if you're looking for advice about your future. And after you finish graduate school, you want to come back to California, what you should do, you've got to meet Jose Cornejo." And we sat down, and, you know, we spent a couple of hours, I think, sitting in Cardenas' office, Assembly Member Cardenas at the time. And since then, I've gone to you for counsel and advice, and I just want to thank you for that. And I've always known you're a great guy. And when I... I didn't even realize this, but I think it was my third or fourth year as a Council Member here that I found out you were from Zacatecas. And I go, "Okay, now I know why he's a great guy." But to your mother, gracias usted también por todo lo que ha hecho para traer aquí su hijo. Una vida a servir al público es a veces difícil y muchas horas, pero como Zacatecano sabemos bien que nosotros trabajamos muy duro, somos gente humilde, pero siempre sirviendo al público y pensando de otros. Y se ve eso en Jose. Muchísimas gracias por todo. Crear un hijo que todos nosotros respetamos aquí en El Cabildo y también en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Gracias usted. And so, Jose, thank you very much. And I too like... There's many Englanders and Weezers who you've counseled and advised, and I'm sure you've... Other folks feel the same. But for me personally, thank you so much. And I thought the same thing, too, when I found out that you and Lupita were dating. I hadn't known Lupita for a while, and it was a great couple. And I keep looking at your children, how beautiful they are. You make great children. And we have four. Rochelle and I have four, you know? It's not that hard. But thank you so much. And Tony, you picked a great one who made a huge... Not only served you well, but served the city well, served the City Hall well, and he was working for you, but at the same time watching out for the city by advising many, many others. So thank you so much.
Mr. Labons, followed by Mr. Reyes.
I think it's great, unfortunately, when someone leaves, but it's great when you look and see what they have. And your beautiful family, Lupita and the beautiful children. You're the richest guy in town. Jose, I like your speech about Los Angeles. That's so important. You said you're not a native, but you love this place, which is so key. And your mom, who you kissed and hugged, which is so special. Your dad's looking down, smiling like you're smiling now. So you're very rich in all your experience there. I want to stand and thank you. I want to especially thank Lupita, because Lupita, prior to her life in telecommunications and international affairs and all the work with communications, she was a great Deputy Mayor for Mayor Riordan, and caring about people. And now she's caring about her children and doing other things. So I'm proud of Lupita, your wonderful wife, and everybody. Congratulations. And every time I'm going west, when I go west down the 101, I'll hit the Caneo Great. I'll think of you.
Mr. Reyes.
I just want to rise and say thank you. Thank you for sharing the human face, the family side. Many folks who listen to the debates or the assertions that are made, the images that are cultivated, it's almost like we were robots. And the fact is, we're human beings. We're family. We're friends. We make sacrifices. We hurt, and we celebrate. And knowing Lupita back, I guess in the mid-'90s. And then getting to know you, Jose, through Tony, because I must say, I'm closer to Tony I am with you. But I also have a Jose, a Jose Guardia, and been with him since, it's 20 years now. So I know how special this bond is, because it is about understanding our mission as civil servants. And being able to provide for our communities with all of our constraints is not easy. And the toll it's taken by our family, by our friends, the amount of time we allocate to making sure we are achieving the goals and the standards that we live by in our performance. And that takes a team. So thank the staff. Thank for acknowledging them, because they are the unsung heroes. I use that term a lot, but I really believe in it, because there's so many sacrifices. So thank you, Tony, for sharing this and for allowing this human side, the family side, to be shared with all of us, because each one of us goes through our challenges. And we each have our own universe, but we are one city. And thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And I just want to offer my congratulations. I remember just a few years ago, there was a beautiful wedding when you two were married. I remember that beautiful occasion, and now the beautiful family. So you've always been a pillar of strength for the office, and I wish you both well in the family and your future endeavors. Your little son there is obviously full of energy, full of excitement, but wish you well in your future endeavors. Mr. Cardenas to close.
Thank you very much. So with that, I give you Jose Cornejo, Chief of Staff, friend, family member, Angelino, this resolution commemorating some of... We can only fit some of your accolades and some of the wonderful things you've done for the community of Los Angeles, for our district, and for the staff. So with that, we just want to give you this resolution in our way of saying not goodbye, but thank you. Thank you so much. Also, I want to thank the city staff who helped us put this together. We got this idea, and they cleverly figured out how we can honor Jose Cornejo with this wonderful commemorative sign. This used to be the sign that was above the parking stall for the CD6 Chief of Staff. So don't worry, all of them are still where they belong. This is the one generation prior, so that we could keep our city honest, but at the same time honor our Chief of Staff, my Chief of Staff, Jose Cornejo, with this commemorative plaque. And they framed it for us real quick, and they put it together, and we were able to keep the current one intact, so it's not missing. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Congratulations once again, Jose, to you and your family. Mr. Clerk, that completes our presentations for today. Let's continue. Mr. Labons, before we continue, Mr. Labons.
As the Caneo family and all the staff walk off, I want to have a special recognition for visitors. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, sir.
From Charamoya Elementary School in the Beechwood Canyon, Hollywood Hills area, we have a very special family. We have Karen, Leanna, Sophie, and Anthony. If you could all stand and be recognized by the City Council. They are very involved in their school and very involved in... They got a trip to come to City Hall. We got commendations to welcome them, and we're so proud. Three years into the United States, and they're great, involved in the process of improving the local public school. Please give the family a big hand there. The Zizaya family.
All right, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number three, called Special for Cards.
Item number three. Ms. Han.
Can we reconsider item two?
We sure will. You're welcome. Number two, colleagues, open for reconsideration. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Very well, madam. It'll be up for reconsideration. On number three, John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, are you here? Yes, he is.
Number three, this is REAP, HollywoodHighlands.org. Our website went down the other day for so many visitors because of what we said about Ms. Han endorsement. It's back up again. We're 100% in favor of REAP. Come to us at HollywoodHighlands.org. Come to us at HollywoodDems@gmail.com with your email. Facebook us as Friends at Mickey Jackson. And come and wait for what I have to say, the news I'm breaking under public comment. HollywoodHighlands.com right now.
All right, that matters before us, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
The city attorney advises me, Ms. Han, that someone else has to bring that matter up for reconsideration, someone who was here when we took that vote. Consider item number two, please. All right, so Mr. Weezer, okay, thank you for technical reasons. Mr. Weezer has item two up for reconsideration. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
All right, thank you. Ms. Han, it was just a technical issue.
I have an amending motion on it.
All right, we'll get to it soon.
On two.
All right. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number four, called Special for Cards. I might advise you that their amending motion, 4A, has been circulated.
All right, number four, John Walsh. Mr. Walsh waves his time on number four.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. Just curious, public comment will be coming up shortly, I hope, or are you going to go through the whole agenda? Normally, you do public comment before you do the agenda, but maybe it's because all these people are here. This sewer service charge for the Promenade at Porter Ranch Community Association, this must be a development of some sort or a business of some sort. So I'm just curious to know, has a community sewer service charge been considered for the progress and the work that's being done at L.A. Live regarding the stadium, regarding the new hotels that are being talked about as part of this new plan of expansion for the L.A. Live complex? What is the status of that? Is the public entitled to know any of that? Because it's going to generate huge demands for water and sewage. It's going to demand huge... Have huge demands on infrastructure. And so, just curious, when does this item regarding the new stadium and the hotels that are being planned by AEG come before the City Council as an agenda item? Thank you. Or is that more open?
Chad Chung. Chad Chung. Is that the last name, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, honorable Council Members, for taking the time to hear our appeal. My name is Chad Chung. I'm the president of the Promenade at Porter Ranch Homeowners Association. I represent its 249 members, who are also members of Council District 12. To make it brief, to give you an idea of what happened, back in 2002, Chappelle Homes developed our community. The meters in question, the water meters in question with sewer charges, were transferred to the association in 2004. When, in 2002, when Chappelle set up those meters, they set them up correctly as they were used for irrigation only. However, during the transfer to the association, they were somehow defaulted back and reclassified as a normal meter, so they were assessed sewage charges. But when they handed off, there was no reason for the association to believe that anything was different than when Chappelle was running those meters. There's no reason for them to... There's no reason for them to look at the bills and say that, you know, see a dramatic increase or say that they should be any other way. In 2009, October, we were comparing some bills and we found some meters that didn't have sewage charges and some that did, which led us to our investigation and brought us eventually to file our appeal before cancel. The association has an annual budget with the DWP of $110,000. We make our payments on time and generally, we are good customers to the DWP. It's only right that if they overcharge us that they refund that money. So we ask that, we go back to the inception date of 2004 and refund the amount that was overpaid from 2004 to 2009. That's all I had.
All right, thank you. Mr. Englander, number four.
Yes, colleagues, you heard from Mr. Chung from Promenade, and I support that as well. I just wanted to let you know that I've got an amending motion in with the corrected amount on that, and I ask for your support on the motion. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Englander, that's the only speaker we have on this matter. The amending motion has been circulated on that matter. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Very well. Next item, please.
That brings us to item five called Special for Councilmember Englander and Cards.
Number five, John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, number five.
You know, Reverend Lawson is waiting here. Why don't you call his item? HollywoodHighlands.org. I mean, this man marched with Martin Luther King, and we have a Republican up here won't even listen to him. HollywoodHighlands.org, we're in favor of the weather station, and we hope that there's more federal funds coming to the weather stations all over the United States, and that money will be voted on by Congresswoman Janice Han when she's elected and she goes to Washington, DC. Thank you.
Mr. Englander, number five.
I'd like to ask the Fire Department, please step up, take a seat at the table if you would. Just have a few questions on this. And while they're coming up, I wanted to share with you why it's critical to have this weather station in the Porter Ranch, Chatsworth area, the Northwest San Fernando Valley, which has some of the highest fire severity zones in the city of Los Angeles annually. You're all well aware that we do evacuations and we've lost a lot of structures in the previous years there as well. The Fire Department's done a phenomenal job, but they don't have the resources, quite frankly, that they should. And we need more information, and that's what I understand this weather station to be. I also understand, thank you for stepping up as well and asking for this, and we're delighted that we can find the funds to do this. I wish we could do more of them. It's my understanding that there's only one other one of these, one other weather station like this in the entire city of Los Angeles. So I'm glad that we can add this other one. If you can let us know why it's so critical and particularly in this area as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Trevor Richmond, LAPD Planning Section, Commander. I would first like to thank Councilmember Englander for your leadership in pushing forward this proposal, this remote access weather station. I'd also like to thank the council members that support the Mount Washington area, because that is the location of the other one. Primarily, the Fire Department uses a remote access weather station as a management tool, okay? We can spot climate forecast in a particular area and then more efficiently deploy our resources in that given area based on the given information from those weather stations. We also use it as an operational tool. We can use it to predict fire spread. We can model fuel beds and look at fire behavior and how quickly a fire will move through a given area. So that specific spot forecast is critical to us operationally.
I understand there's a couple of other questions, that there's some private weather stations in the vicinity somewhere as well, and we've got some other remote types of stations that are private stations throughout the city. If that's the case, why would we need to have our own?
Well, I think the private weather stations are just that, private. And we need to have the ability, your constituents need to have the ability, the Fire Department needs to have the ability to have remote access to those weather stations and be able to access that data to make more informed decisions.
And would you suggest that this is one of the most important places, locations in the city to have one of these type of stations to spend this kind of, these types of resources?
Absolutely. Any area of the city that has an urban interface where we have brush and homes in the same area, we would support a remote access weather station. As you're aware, in the city of Los Angeles, we could have fog in the Palisades and have 40 mile an hour winds in Porter Ranch. So there's a lot of different types of climates in the city of Los Angeles on any given day.
Well, with the growth, particularly in Northwest Valley, I applaud your efforts and all that you've done. Certainly, I've been out there on the front lines as a reserve LAPD officer doing evacuations. And colleagues, I lost my first house in a fire, so I know what it's like to be displaced. I know what it's like during evacuations. In fact, in the last fire, my family was evacuated at 3:00 in the morning. We relocated the kids, and then I went down to LAPD to put a uniform on and go do evacuations up in Porter Ranch and Chatsworth as well. So I'm looking forward to getting more information to make sure that we've got weather stations, things like this. Will this also help early deployment? Will you get information so we can send resources before fires get there, before they start, before they're ignited? Is that the idea behind having these?
What the weather station will allow us to do is anticipate extreme fire weather behavior. So when the conditions and the humidity drops and the wind speed picks up and the temperature rises, we will have access to that data in that particular area, and then we'll be more effectively be able to deploy those resources in that given area.
Terrific. Well, hopefully, this will be the second of many. I want to also applaud Councilman Weezer for his efforts. He was the one that got the first one done, I believe, a couple of years ago in the city of LA. So this will be the second, and hopefully, we can have a few more in the immediate future throughout the city of Los Angeles. So I ask my colleagues for support on this. I want to thank the Fire Department, the finest Fire Department in the country as well. So thank you very much.
Mr. Labonge.
Leo Jose Cadeo, your former Chief of Staff, Mr. Smith. You know the ground, you know the district. Having this for the Fire Department helps because the wind does whip into the North Ridge of Los Angeles, as they call that area, the North Ridge. And that's very key. And as the Fire Chief spoke of, the science now is used in fire science to actually moisture, wind, all the other elements, not just the old triangle that is taught, teaches in the Junior Fire Marshal Grade School book. But I want to thank you, Mitch, because I think that's the first time your name's been up there for a motion, so you're hitting the ground running. Congratulations. Thank you, Chief. Thanks.
Mr. Weezer.
Yes, I wanted to follow up on having one of these in my district as being one of the first. We worked with Councilmember Brad Reyes, who also shares the Mount Washington area, and they worked great. I think this is the future for the city of LA to have more of these throughout the city. I want to thank Mr. Englander for moving forward with having one in his district. But in our area, as a hillside area, one of the benefits as well is that there's less red flag days. We are better to, have better information so that we don't depend on the regional weather station, that there's going to be a lot more red flag days because we don't pinpoint the areas that it will or will not affect. This will get more precise information. We're able to have less red flag days, which means that our residents don't have to scramble around and try to find parking in an area that's very difficult to find parking with very few roads, et cetera. So it's worked well. We're actually moving forward to help refine some of the work we did initially, and I think we're going, as we get more out there, we'll get better information about how to better put these in where, et cetera. So I think this is a great thing.
Councilmember Labonge, I appreciate you noting that this is the first time Councilmember Mitch Englander speaks on an item and pushes a motion forward. But I noticed that too, because ever since he started sitting next to me, I started to get a little skeptical. What's this guy like? Is he conniving? Is he sneaky? Is he self-serving? And lo and behold, the first motion that he puts through is getting the Fire Department to scrape what little money they have lying around to put something in his district. Here he goes, self-serving, conniving, selfish, underhanded, try to slip this by when maybe we're not paying attention or what have you. Can you please clarify for me, is this only going to serve his district or does it serve beyond his district?
It would serve beyond the district. It actually would serve the entire city of Los Angeles having this information. As you know, we have many microclimates in the city of Los Angeles, and for our firefighters, the safety of, their safety is dependent on situational awareness, and to have that hour-by-hour data available is just beneficial to our department and is beneficial to the citizens of the city.
Okay, hold on, you made me look bad enough. I apologize, Mitch. You're not sneaky, you're not conniving, you're not self-serving. This is a motion that is going to serve the entire city of Los Angeles. I apologize, I was wrong about you. Welcome to the City Council.
Mr. Rosendorf, followed by Mr. Englander.
Well, he wasn't grandstanding either. I heard that word the other day on some other issue. Okay. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, sir.
Mandeville Canyon, I understand, is an area where you would like to put up one of these. Explain why.
Well, a lot of the areas in that particular geographic area of the city are what we call fire corridors. And when we get a fire that's moving through an area with normal fire weather behavior, that fire is very predictable on how it'll move through an area or a region. So we'd like to identify those known fire corridors and position radio, the remote access weather stations in those areas that will allow us to better predict what the fire weather is in that specific area.
I remember the other day, about two years ago, the previous chief showed me maps and we looked at Mandeville Canyon, and lo and behold, a week later, we had a fire raging on the Sepulveda that at one point people felt could leap across, go through Mountain Gate and end up right in Mandeville Canyon. I was on the phone with my constituents, "Pack up, get ready, or shelter in place," were the words out of my mouth. What I'd like to do is have you come and have a meeting. We'll get the three Mandeville Canyon homeowners groups together and make a presentation to them. I understand that you need money to make this happen, and if my constituents could see the value of it, they'll certainly write a check and help make this happen. What I like is a full-blown presentation, why it's of value, how it will have a safety impact, and it will be a public service for the people of Mandeville Canyon. Thank you for doing this, and thank you, Mitch, for showing leadership on an important issue for all of us in the city. Appreciate it very much.
Mr. Englander.
Thank you, sir.
Our final speaker.
In closing, I just wanted to thank, I thank my colleague, Tony Cardenas, for what might have been a compliment, I'm not quite sure yet. We'll have to play back the tape and figure that one out. And just to also ensure that we do share this data with all of the other council districts, particularly in the San Fernando Valley, maybe with the exception of CD6, we'll look at that as well, see if it makes sense to do so. But having said that, you know, the primary responsibility of a police officer is to prevent the crime, not to effectuate an arrest. And the primary responsibility of a firefighter is to save a life and property and to prevent a fire before it ever breaks out, before it starts. So I'm delighted that we can do this. I appreciate all my colleagues' support on this. This is something that's long overdue, and hopefully, we will see these come through fruition throughout the city, citywide. So thank you again for all the hard work that you do.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Englander, and thank you, colleagues, and thank you, Fire Department. And now let's vote on this matter. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Next item, please. Mr. Clerk.
That brings us to item six called Special for Cards.
Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Street vacation. Need a vacation from having Janice Han elected to Congress. Oh my God, what a disaster that would be.
Mr. Sacks, that's not the item before us.
Mr. President, you never mention anything when people are for Janice Han.
Mr. Sacks, it's not about Ms. Han. Stay on the subject, please.
So then when John Walsh...
Stay on the subject, please.
I am staying on the subject, sir.
It's not about Ms. Han, it's not about Mr. Walsh.
I'm not talking about Ms. Han or Mr. Walsh. You are talking about them.
You just brought their names up. It's about street vacation.
I did. I said we need to take a vacation from this, just like we need to take a vacation from having Janice Han in Congress. Will there be a vacation notice for the LA Live, the stadium deal that's going to be occurring? Are there California Street Highway codes? And anybody, a bag of rocks instead of Janice Han?
All right, that matter is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Next item, please.
Item seven called Special for Cards.
Number seven, Arnold Sacks, once again, and followed by John Walsh. Number seven.
Yes, thank you again. This is a contract? What contract? With Watts Labor Community Action Committee. You know, on item number five, you have accounts number for $800. In some of these accounts, you have minutia regarding the amounts of money involved. This is any contract, send a term of a contract or any other contract number. What kind of information is involved in this item on your agenda? Maybe this could be a contract to get Janice Han out of office instead of elected to Congress. I don't know.
The Community Development Department.
Anyway, if that should happen, what will happen to the rest of Bedford Falls? Can we get a little bit more information? Any contract, any number, any amount? This is LA's finest.
Thank you. That matters before us, colleagues. I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-A-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.org. This concerns, if you bother to read it, anybody who comes up here should at least read the thing. It says that it's to spend some money to help Watts Labor Community Action Organization renovate their parking lot. I'm 100% in favor of this. Watts Labor Community, and this is Ms. Han and Ms. Labonge's motion. No one has done a greater job for Watts. No one has done a greater job fighting the gangs, the Crips and the Bloods than Janice Han has. And when Rupert Murdoch in England has a 10-minute hit piece on KTV.
Mr. Sacks.
On Janice Han, I'm talking about Watts.
Mr. Walsh.
I'm talking about the issue.
Ms. Han, you want this one to go?
And you support.
Ms. Han, you like this one?
You support Huey. And now you let the...
Mr. Walsh, you're done. Thank you. Mr. Walsh, you're done. Stay on the subject or we will terminate the conversation. Ms. Han, what he said is incorrect.
No, what he said was right. Oh, that you're supporting my...
That's correct. Just to make the record straight. Okay. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Next item, please. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number nine. Called Special for Councilmember Alarcon.
All right, Mr. Alarcon, number nine, sir. Mr. Alarcon? There he is. Number nine.
Actually, if we could ask Felicito Cazion to step forward. We did not have the opportunity to have Mr. Cazion come before the Jobs Committee, but he is nominated to replace Marvin Martinez in the non-business category. Marvin Martinez worked for the LA Community College District as does Felicito Cazion. So let me get the spelling correct. Is it Felsicito or Felicito?
Felicito Cahayan.
Felicito, okay. So we've had three different spellings of your name, and I'm sure that's the first time in your life. But could you please, this is regarding the appointment to the Workforce Investment Board, and so obviously, we didn't have a chance to interview him in committee, so we are pleased that he's here today. So if you could please tell the council about your background and why you want to be on the Workforce Investment Board.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, committee members. My name is Felicito Cahayan. I'm with the Los Angeles Community College District. I'm the Vice Chancellor of Economic and Workforce Development. I was recently appointed a little while ago. I've been part of the workforce development system for quite a few years for the Los Angeles District. I was the Dean of Economic and Workforce Development for three years, and before that, nine years at a different district. And what I'd like to do is provide information from the perspective of... And what I'd like to do is provide information from the perspective of higher education in order to provide support to the workforce development system in the Los Angeles area, providing information when it comes down to higher education, and see how we can work together and leverage resources across the board.
The Community College District obviously has a significant portion of workforce investment dollars prescribed to it. How can the city better partner with the Community College District to ensure that our workforce is prepared for the emerging sectors like green, green technology and the like?
Well, the Community College System is comprised of nine community colleges. We're the largest district throughout the nation. We too are facing, you know, financial challenges as we speak throughout the state. However, by bringing together the resources that the Community College District has to the Workforce Investment Board, I believe that we can all work together to better serve a broader group of individuals. Those individuals that are in career transition, individuals who are unemployed, facing financial challenges, all those individuals that need to return back into the workforce, we need to work together in order to provide a broader and enhanced service mechanism.
Finally, for my part, there's quite a bit of consternation regarding SB 768 de Salgner. Can you state your understanding of it and what that, if it were passed, what that would do to our system?
The SB 776, as it stands right now, we're...
I'm sorry, is it 776 or 766?
I believe it's the 776. I may be mistaken.
Okay, well...
It's the bill that everybody's talking about.
Yeah, they put 776 on my notes, so...
Yes.
766.
It's closely being looked at from my office, the Office of Economic and Workforce Development. This situation, which we're all part of, the Community College System and the Workforce Development Board, we all have to work together because as the emphasis and the push to increase the training activity under this legislation, if that were to be pushed through and supported, it's critical that the Community College System come to the table and offer its support to the workforce development system. As more people do need training, and there is a lot of literature that supports training will lead to higher-end jobs, the monies have to be leveraged, put together and aligned sequentially in order to make sure that the broadest group of individuals are served in that manner. So I think it's a good time to work together and just be open to collaborating.
Councilmembers, I haven't had extensive time to get to know Felicito, but I can tell you that it's essential that we have a high-ranking representative from the Community College District and the Workforce Investment Board. They are a key partner. I can tell you that we have, my office has partnered with them with the Department of Environmental Affairs, the former Department of Environmental Affairs, relative to a green business program that they designed the curriculum for and we implement to expand the universe of those who have green businesses, called the Green Business Certification Program. They provide the certification process, we, I should say, we provide the certification process, they actually do the training to ensure that they are greening their businesses. So I can say that the Community College District is a very important partner in this process, and I'm pleased that the mayor has nominated Felicito Cazayón, and I recommend we support his nomination.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. No one else on the queue? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Very well, you're confirmed, thank you. Congratulations. Next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 10, called Special for Cards.
John Walsh, number 10. Mr. Walsh passes, no one on the queue, number 10.
Pardon the interruption, sir. Might I advise everybody that a substitute ordinance and amending motion 10A have both been distributed and are before you for consideration.
Very well. On that matter, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, next item, please.
That brings us to item number two, called Special for Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, number two, on your amending.
Amending motion 2A has been distributed and is before you for consideration.
Very well. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this amending motion is pertaining to the pretty amazing project that we're going to do in Jordan Downs, right? We are going to completely redevelop the Jordan Downs Public Housing Project to become a wonderful multifamily housing development. We expect to have retail there, we expect to really transform that area like we've done successfully with some of the other housing projects in the city of Los Angeles. It was the desire of the city and the housing authority to annex some businesses around Jordan Downs to kind of make for a better jurisdictional property line, if you will, just seemed to make it better to allow us to develop. And one of the things we want to do, obviously, we want to build replacement housing, family per family. So we want a piece of property where we can begin to build affordable units so that folks that live in Jordan Downs can be relocated right there, because a lot of residents are nervous, right, when we do these redevelopment projects. They're not really sure what's going to happen to them. And we want to make sure that we build replacement housing before we completely transform Jordan Downs. Part of the issue is some businesses who are going to be annexed in, we're a little concerned about, you know, they're in the county, they're in unincorporated county, and they're a little nervous about what it would mean to them to now pay the business taxes that businesses in the city pay. So what we're going to do is have our CAO and our CLA, along with Building and Safety, actually look at the analysis of what this means, both to the businesses and both to the cities. What does it mean if we exempt these businesses from our business license taxes and permits? What does that mean? And as you know, anytime you annex a piece of property in the city of Los Angeles or in the county, it goes through LAFCO, right? It's a whole process. It'll probably take a year for this to be completed. But what we want is for this fiscal analysis of what it would mean to exempt these businesses to be done as a part of this annex process, annexation process, and we want them to report back to the Jobs and Business Development Committee, right? Bernard Parks is concerned about what this will mean, so instead of just having this go through the whole process with LAFCO, we want that fiscal analysis of this particular issue of annexing these businesses to go before Jobs and the Business Development Committee. So that's really what this impact does. And then, you know, this committee can decide whether or not we think those exemptions could be permanent, or if there's some issue of what that will mean to the economic vitality of our city. So that's all that this does. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosendorf.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to enthusiastically support you on this motion. I know you're going to go to Washington, you'll be of great help to us there on affordable housing and a lot of other issues. It'll be our loss, but it'll be the nation's gain. This, again, when you said replacement housing and getting it built on time so that the people who are in need of affordable housing will get it. That's the kind of leadership in this council that I've enjoyed from you, and I look forward to your leadership in Washington. Thank you very much for this motion.
That matter is now before us, colleagues, with the amending motion. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Do you have that fourth with?
Fourth with, yes, Ms. Hahn, fourth with on that matter.
That brings us to general public comment.
All right, we have 16 cards, we have 17 cards, and this will be the public comment time. If you're here for public comment, turn your card in. Once the discussion starts, we will not accept any additional cards. So if you want to speak on public comment, I suggest you turn your cards in now. Joe Rodriguez, our first public speaker, followed by Elwood Williams. Mr. Rodriguez, followed by Mr. Williams. You have two minutes, sir, go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Jose Rodriguez. I am the president of the Church Council at La Plaza United Methodist Church on Olvera Street. Methodists have been on the plaza since 1854. Our ministry has been on Olvera Street since 1899. The present building that we worship every Sunday since 1899 was built as Methodist headquarters in 1926. We are here to support our councilperson, the 14th District, Jose Wezar, as we negotiate a lease, a fair lease for our, for the facility. What we're looking for is a flat fee, normal use lease. Under the current agreement that we have now, we are somewhat dismayed that our own bishop cannot schedule a meeting in our church because she's not a member of the local church. She is the leader of our denomination. We're also dismayed that tomorrow, when we were going to have Father Estrada across the street at the La Placita Catholic Church, use our billing for an event there, we were not able to use it under the local agreement because he is not a member of the local church. We see ourselves as Christians doing the work of Jesus, where your city people would call it fee-for-service, pay-to-pray, we call it ministry and serving the congregation. We hope that you, through Councilman Wezar's, Councilman Wezar's leadership, will give us a fair, flat fee, normal use lease for our facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elwood Williams, followed by Reverend Dr. Cedric Bridgeforth.
Members of the council, my name is Elwood Williams. I've been asked by the Plaza Church to tell you a little bit about my great aunt Catherine B. Higgins. She came to Los Angeles in May 1915, a single woman at the age of 34, to establish the Plaza Community Center for the Methodist Church and to serve the Mexican community. She was called the good angel of the plaza by many people, many people she served and cared about that lived near the plaza. She was given that name because she would do anything in her power to meet the many needs of the people who came to the center, be it health, food, housing, employment, spiritual or other needs. Her greatest joy and satisfaction came in ministering to just plain folks. Catherine and her mother purchased 200 old coffee sacks at five cents each, repaired them and sent them out to the Methodist churches to collect unwanted items. Some of the collected items would be repaired and given to the people coming to the center. The rest would be sold to help finance the clinic. And that was the start of the Goodwill Industries in Los Angeles in about 1917. And she was given recognition through the years for her involvement with the Goodwill. Catherine also established a children's home for orphans and children from broken homes. She loved the children there as if they were her own and enjoyed being with them and watching them grow. The home operated from about 1923 to 1955. And she and her mother donated the stained glass window which is over the entrance to the Plaza Church. The Plaza Church was very dear to her heart and was her home church. Through the years, she accomplished a lot by her gentle and friendly persuasion. She could quote-unquote "twist your arm" in a way, very effective way, and you didn't even know it. If she were alive today, she would be here to give a little arm twisting and urge you to help keep the Plaza Church as a God's house and not just a building to be rented out for money. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'll remind the speakers, we don't want to cut you off, but you all have two minutes on this. Reverend Dr. Cedric Bridgeforth, followed by Father Richard Estrada. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. I am the Reverend Cedric Bridgeforth, the Los Angeles and the Santana District Superintendent. What that means is that I have oversight of over 120 churches and agencies spanning from Malibu to San Clemente. And today I'm before you because one of the oldest of those institutions, the La Plaza United Methodist Church, has an uncertain future due to an impasse that we've reached during the last 45-day negotiations. I do want to thank the council for approving the 45-day temporary access permit, and I also want to extend a special thanks to Councilman Wezar, his staff and other city staff for working with us in those weekly meetings to move the conversation forward. However, there are some issues that we are stuck on, and we need this item referred to committee, or we need it someplace where we can move forward to secure a long-term cooperative agreement as it relates to use of the La Plaza United Methodist Church. One of the issues is a flat fee for use of the facility for religious activities. We do not believe, the second issue is we do not believe we should be charged to provide social services that provide for community benefit. Third, the term that is proposed currently by the city is a five-and-five. That is unacceptable for a church and also for a nonprofit organization to secure funding or to even be present in the community within any amount of effectiveness. As far as it relates to the nonprofit that would be located there at La Plaza, the amount for in-kind services is unreasonable for a startup. And then the issue of other churches being able to use the facility while the La Plaza United Methodist Church has access to the building is unacceptable as well. We simply ask that there at least be consent of the La Plaza United Methodist Church before any other church is allowed to use the facility. Again, I thank Councilman Wezar and the other city staff for working with us on this. Thank you.
Father Richard Estrada, followed by James Lawson.
I'm Father Richard Estrada from our Lady Queen of Angels Church, La Placita. We are neighbors right across the street from the Plaza United Methodist Church. We have worked together to improve the community, to improve people's lives. And everything that was said, and I will not repeat that, but if you go over right now to my church, you'll see hundreds of people in line for food. If you can go any time during the day, during the week in both churches, and you will see people that need, they need spiritual guidance because of the economic times, they're tough times, and they need a place to go. That's the history of both churches there. We belong there, and we want to do our business, and we don't want developers getting in the way because they see to develop, say, a hotel at that site. So I'm here to support the Methodist Church. We're not alone. We have plenty of brothers and sisters who will join us next time that we come. Thank you.
Thank you. James Lawson, followed by Michael Lawrence Dickerson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the City Council, I join in supporting the remarks that have been made thus far about this matter. We did not expect to come back here again so soon because we wanted indeed the business of La Plaza Church to go forward. 1946, the state of California used its power of eminent domain to buy that property for historical, cultural preservation purposes. They then made a 50-year lease with the La Plaza Church and with some of the other nonprofits on that Olivera Street. And I want to propose to City Council that they seriously consider that the land was demanded by the state and that these organizations, these nonprofits, and especially La Plaza Church, be given another 50-year lease at a value of a dollar a year. And then I propose that we allow this entity from 100 years or more, Olivera Street, basically to develop on the terms of those organizations, that church, not on the terms of the large investment, real estate investment funds that see that land next to the Union Station and want it according to the single standard of market value. One of the negotiating things that I think is rather ridiculous is that they're calling for La Plaza Church to charge $3,000 for a baptism. I simply say that there are other values in this city rather than making some developers richer.
Thank you. Michael Dickerson, followed by Duke Russell. Michael Dickerson, then Duke Russell. Again, I'll remind you, you have two minutes on the speakers.
Yeah, I'm Michael Lawrence Dickerson. I like these yellow shirts, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here essentially to speak with my councilman and representative, Janice Hahn, concerning the fact that she may not be the council representative for Watts very soon. And that's kind of sad because, you know, we always had her at our back and she... And that's kind of sad because, you know, we always had her at our back and she was always kind of take care of things. I remember when we had our storm, the first thing she said was, "One of the biggest problems we have is Los Angeles does not have snowplows." So dealing with things that, you know, you don't expect to have to deal with and working with things that a lot of people have had problems with in the past and haven't been able to deal with effectively, we've kind of gotten in the habit of seeing her there, at least trying to do those kinds of things. So I'm here representing the Watts community, hopeful that she's going to be able to pass on to whoever comes behind her in the city council situation. You know, we're figuring she's probably going to get elected, right? So we already count her gone, right? But I'm just hopeful that she will spend enough time with people amongst her staff or has already made plans for continuing things and making sure things don't get lost. Targeted Neighborhood Initiative, the community votes for the Rainbow Bridge, now Roy P. Benavides, Dwight H. Johnson, Bridge to Peace. And here it is, you're always saying you don't want to do what the community says they want to do, and you give the money to the Watts Towers. That happened. That happened. A lot of people know about it. You remember it. How it happened? We were supposedly not ready to accept the money and get the job done. The contractor had taken the training with MTA. They were ready to climb over the lines. We had digital representations of what we were going to do. It was all lined up. We had three proposals from three separate contractors. It was all there. The guy had attended every single one of our meetings, the top one that we wanted to use. Why? He thought it was going to go. And all of a sudden...
All right, thank you. Duke Russell, Ted Ramirez. Duke Russell. Ted Ramirez, is Ted Ramirez here? Go ahead, Ted, and then Duke will come up after you. Ted Ramirez.
Good morning, councilmembers, friends. My name is Ted Ramirez. I'm here to support a fair and equitable lease of La Plaza United Methodist Church. In January of 1957, my parents immigrated from Chilpancingo, Guerrero, Mexico, to Los Angeles and thank God for the heart of the La Plaza Church to have services in Spanish so that my parents would have a place of worship, as American citizens who have a right to worship and fellowship. Throughout the last five, six years, I've been part of the lease committee of La Plaza Church, even within Los Angeles City Councilmember Villaregoza. We've worked diligently in efforts to renew a fair and equitable lease. I have read the reports by the City Controller's Office regarding La Plaza throughout the years, and I've been dismayed to note that La Plaza United Methodist Church is never mentioned, and we are there physically. We have been there for over 100 years. Maps of Olivera Street put up by the city also exclude La Plaza United Methodist Church. So to begin to charge fees for something that you claim does not exist does not make sense. I am here to ask all of you to please renew the lease $1 a year, as Pastor Lawson has stated, so that we can continue to conduct our services, our ministries, and to have the heart of the love of Jesus in our hearts as we have had. We have had food distributions and we have fed the homeless throughout the years here in downtown Los Angeles. And I'm very proud to be part of this wonderful church and this wonderful ministry. We look at it, the lease renewal should not be an opportunity simply for the city to make money, but to look at the history of this great church and the many ministries and communities that we have served throughout the last 110 years. I urge all of you to keep the rich history of this church in your minds as we renew and negotiate the lease for this great church and this great city. Thank you very much.
Duke Russell, followed by Reverend Sandra Richards.
President, members of the council. My name is Duke Russell. I've given all of you copies of a story in Yesterday's Times regarding saving the only sports field left at Los Angeles City College, my alma mater. I need to mention that I played baseball on Snyder Field, just like Councilman Tom Labons and Councilman Parks played football there after World War II. Thousands of veterans were helped to get jobs because of Snyder Field. Snyder Field was destroyed about eight years ago to construct buildings. Unbelievable. The field that was supposed to be replacing it is on the roof of a parking structure. That's unbelievable. It's unjust. And now the field that was used for the golf range, the public golf driving range, is available, and they're going to put buildings there. My God, that's unbelievable. It's a terrible, terrible thing to do to the young people of the city and veterans. Thousands of high school graduates, many of them very good athletes, need to go to that school. From L.A. City College, I went to Loyola University. That's why I've been here so many years. I'm putting into practice what Loyola University taught me, and I implore you to put this on the agenda. I've asked President Garcetti to put it on the agenda, discuss it as intelligent people. You're all brilliant people, and you can bring this to an intelligent end. Don't let the field be destroyed. The buildings they're going to put on this field can be placed elsewhere. Everybody here knows that. Everybody knows it. Please, save the sports field for the thousands of families, all of them in your districts. It will be an absolute education and social disaster if that field is destroyed.
Thank you. Reverend Sandra Richards, followed by Reverend David K. Farley.
Thank you, councilmembers. I want to begin by just thanking you for the sacrifices that you make for our city, the many hours and hard work that you put in to give our city its amazing way of life. Over 100 years ago, a congregation worked, scrimped and saved and sacrificially made a building and a ministry at Plaza Olvera. Over 50 years ago, our government took that building with the promise that that congregation would have a home. Now that promised heritage is in jeopardy. Current negotiations for a new lease are at an impasse, and the rate structure being proposed by the representatives of the city is untenable for the congregation. The city attorney, I understand, is saying that the church must be treated as other businesses or the city faces a problem with the separation of church and state. I don't know where that issue was over 50 years ago when the state took the church, but at this moment, moving forward, it might surprise you to hear that I agree in part with the city attorney. That is to say that our legal advisors are telling us that the church should be treated as any other nonprofit business. The city has many leases for $1 per year with lots of nonprofits. Many of those nonprofits are run by churches. And so for the work that we do, for the well-being of our city, we don't believe we should have to pay a market rate. Is the city going to renegotiate all nonprofit leases to be in line with market rates? If not, then the city is singling out La Plaza United Methodist Church to enact a lease that would be onerous for this congregation. Mr. Wezar, thank you so much for your leadership on this issue. We deeply appreciate you and your staff for all the many hours that you put in with listening to us, working with us. What we're asking for all of you councilmembers is to please think what you are doing. We need you to exercise strong leadership to preserve the legacy of this church and enable its members to continue serving the community. Be fair, be consistent and be strong. Thank you all very much.
Reverend David K. Farley, followed by Trey Basquet.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to speak regarding our opposition to propose fees to be charged at La Plaza for hours spent providing nonreligious social services to the community. But first of all, I want to assure the council that, to my knowledge, the United Methodist Churches throughout Los Angeles area do not plan to make it our policy to charge the city of Los Angeles fees for the many countless hours of social services we provide for its residents on a daily basis and have been for over 100 years. Don't worry, these services will continue, and the city will not pay a thing. In fact, I think you may be saving some money. We continue these services even though we, churches, are in economic rough times too. We have had to make cuts, but the last thing we will cut in rough times, especially in rough times, is our services to those who are most vulnerable to those rough times. And the last thing we will sign is an agreement that will make it even more difficult for one of our churches to provide these services. It is more important now than ever that we partner in serving the people of Los Angeles. Church, nonprofit, private, community, government, partner together so that the best of all that we have to offer is shared and serves the people. La Plaza wants to partner with the city and others in providing services and wants to sign an agreement that encourages, not discourages, those services and that partnership. So please provide the strong leadership necessary to get that kind of agreement and get it done without further delay. Thank you very much.
Trey Basquet, followed by Judy Napton.
Good morning, Buenos dias. My name is Trey Basquet. Yo me llamo Trey Basquet. Gracias por su ayuda. Thank you very much for your help, I should say, and engaging us in the democratic process. People all around the world are fighting for that, and we're here today. And I want to thank Councilmember Wezar and his hard-working chief of staff, Anna Cubas. I see a smile on her face, so that's nice. Usually she's very diligent and working very hard. I am a congregant at the church. My family ties through my in-laws go way back to 1899. I'll invoke the good name again of my in-laws, Yolanda Naro and my beautiful wife, Ruth Naro, and the Rodriguez family as well. Enrique Naro was a pastor at that church in 1899. And so we're asking for continued transparency in this process. Necesitamos la luz del consejo de la ciudad en este proceso, por favor. We really need your help to continue this process. We've made some progress. There is more progress to be made. We're not quite done yet. I know there's a separation of church and state issue, but that does not require discrimination of the church by the state during the process. And though it's been contentious, we appreciate the work of everybody on each side of the table here. And it's been difficult, but I believe we can come to an agreement that's reasonable. With regards to the incremental fee structure the church would impose on us, I got to ask you, what would you have us charge a grieving mother who comes to the church for counsel or a person or probably one of your constituents or stakeholders who comes to our church for history of the city and El Pueblo or baptism or copies of many historical photos we have? What would you have us charge for those? Because we don't have an a la carte menu, no church has, and there's no religious test for anybody to be in our church or to attend our church or to access our services. So the incremental fee structure is not reasonable. We also need a long-term lease to feel secure. 50 years would be great, and we would appreciate that. I want to thank Councilmember Cricorian and Cardenas for being here today. They weren't here prior to today, but I did brief your chief of staff, Adrian, and hopefully information will be coming your way, sir.
Thank you.
Look for our engagement in the...
Judy Napton, followed by Shaquille Sayed.
Good morning, and thank you, Councilman Wezar, for, clearly for your leadership with the United Methodist Church. I do support them, obviously. And thank you, members of this council, for your actions on May 4th. As you know, La Plaza United Methodist Church has a history of over 100 years at El Pueblo, 100 years of its continuous moral and spiritual leadership. We believe the lease agreement should not restrict the church from continuing its traditional religious activities. We believe the lease agreement should not restrict the church from continuing to provide extensive social services to the community. We believe the lease agreement should not restrict the church from continuing to host tourists and visitors to this historic site. Our activities ultimately help the community at large and must continue unabated by the prohibitive per-use fee structure advocated by the city negotiators. In order to operate successfully, we must establish a flat, simple, monthly rate, which is clearly affordable and with a term of at least 20 years. 50 years would be nice. Services of the church are funded by free will offering, most often anonymously. The church accepts these offerings and is then able to provide services to the public in the same humble humanitarian spirit. By principle, the services are free and all are welcome. You are all welcome. So I invite you to La Plaza United Methodist Church at historic El Pueblo. I also have faith that you'll vote in favor of the church and the church's mission on matters that come before the city council. We appreciate your support and thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Shaquille Sayed, followed by William, looks like Deverell.
Respected councilmembers, salam aleikum. Peace be on to you. My name is Shaquille Sayed, and I represent Islamic Shura Council of Southern California, a federation of mosques and Muslim organizations in Southern California representing over half a million Muslims. I stand here today in solidarity with La Plaza United Methodist Church and support its request for a lease that's based on an affordable, flat monthly fee. And here's why. Unemployment numbers are as high as ever. Suicide among youth and returning war veterans are at an all-time high. People suffering with mental health issues are doubled in the last two decades. And this is to say our city's ailments are now in near malaise. And the selfless doctor trying to heal this epidemic, respected councilmembers, is La Plaza United Methodist Church, where the homeless and the hungry, the poor and the indigent are always embraced and never, no one is ever turned away from this church. And your support to La Plaza is not only for La Plaza, but also for the weak and the forgotten. As a Muslim and as a proud citizen of a diverse city of Los Angeles, I ask that you revisit the decision that's being made and grant La Plaza a long-term lease at an affordable, flat monthly fee. I thank you for giving time to us. I also like to submit a bunch of letters that are signed by faith leaders from across the spectrum, from Muslim community, from Christian community and Jewish community who support the La Plaza United Methodist Church, and I urge your attention in this regard. Thank you so very much.
William Deverell, followed by John Walsh.
Good morning. My name is William Deverell. I'm a professor of history at USC and director of the Huntington USC Institute on California and the West, a collaborative research and teaching entity created by the university in the Huntington about seven years ago. I'm pleased to be able to offer these brief remarks in support of the Plaza Methodist Church being allowed to continue its long tradition, not only as a house of faith and worship, but as a leading, innovative and important institution of social welfare and outreach in the very center, the historic heart of our city. A century ago, as the Mexican Revolution raged south of the international border, Los Angeles entered into a critical period of urban and suburban growth. Rapidly eclipsing San Francisco as the biggest metropolis of the West, Los Angeles exploded in demographic, industrial, agricultural, tourist and other arenas, fortified in large measure by the working-class labor of Mexican descent peoples who both escaped the ravages of the revolution and answered the call for hard work in the building of this place. And it was here in the plaza that the Plaza Methodist Church embarked on a hugely significant program of social, political, ecclesiastical and humanitarian outreach to the polyglot poor and newly arrived who lived in close proximity to the absolute center of Los Angeles. Both by way of clerical and lay personnel, the Methodist Plaza Church embodied the progressive movement and moment in Los Angeles, its humanitarian heart at the best. This was progressive work with principles guiding each effort, safe drinking water campaigns, English language instruction, health instruction for children, citizenship awareness for newcomers. The church and its work, the church and its heart are woven through my own scholarship, books like A Revised View of California Progressivism, a book on the 1920s, and most significantly, my book, Whitewashed Adobe: The Rise of Los Angeles and the Remaking of Its Mexican Past. Institutions such as the Plaza Methodist Church deserve our respect and our care. It is a noble house of worship with a noble heritage, and it's an honor to speak here before you on its behalf, both as a scholar and a citizen. Thank you.
John Walsh, followed by Noel Weiss. John Walsh, followed by Noel Weiss on public comments. Mr. Wezar.
Thank you. Before the public speakers on this item leave, and I know this item was not agendized, so I can't speak too long on this item, but I do want to just thank the public comments on this item. As many of you know, back in May, this council passed a motion to provide the church with access to the church, which at the time, the administration at the Placita Vera was not allowing. And secondly, we directed several departments in the city to get together. We have been meeting on a weekly basis. I do believe we are close to resolution. This item will come before council in the next few weeks, but I do want to thank the speakers who came before so that the full council hears some of the issues. So when this item comes before council, they are familiar with it. And rest assured that at least a councilmember who represents the Placita Vera recognizes the importance of the church being there, the contributions it has made, and the future relationship between the church and the city to move forward as one where there is mutual respect and agreement on how we move forward. So we will see this item come before us soon, and thank you for coming today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wezar. John Walsh, Noel Weiss. John Walsh, Noel Weiss.
And just a reminder, councilmembers, this matter cannot have a discussion... And just a reminder, council members, this matter cannot have a discussion because it's not on the agenda.
Mr. Labons, this is not a matter for discussion.
I understand that, but I welcome the word-
It's public comment.
But it's there, I was the committee chair. That's all I said.
Very well. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. On Wednesday, Channel 11 Rupert Murdoch Station aired a 10-minute commercial for Craig Huey, who is running as the Tea Party candidate against Democrat Janice Hahn. It was an attack on the city. It was an attack on the police chief. It was an attack on everyone but the gangs. Janice Hahn has had no connection with any gang. She's not a gangster's mall, and she's not a stripper, as you've seen in the video for Mr. Huey, who has a body of a stripper on Janice Hahn's head. I'm telling you right now what's happening. On this weekend, hundreds if not thousands of Tea Party people from California and from all over the United States are landing in Santa Monica and this congressional district. The Koch Brothers and others are spending millions of dollars on this campaign to defeat Janice Hahn. You don't see that in the LA Times. This is what's happening now. This man is a homophobe. This man is a Tea Party member. Why, when is this, and what is happening? I call on the mayor of the city of Los Angeles to walk precincts for Janice Hahn. I call on Barack Obama to 100% back Janice Hahn today. I call on Jerry Brown to show up and precinct. I call on Ann Just. You are letting her go out to dry. You're hanging her out to dry. And I'm telling you, Mr. President of the United States, and this is one of the most Democratic congressional districts in the United States, and if the Tea Party can win here, Mr. Barack Obama, your candidacy is toast. You are not going to win, because everything lies and rests on Janice Hahn winning. Hollywood Highlands-
Noel Weiss on public comment. Eight-hour public comment time, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, council. I think this council should take up the issue of giving an award to the Watts Gang Task Force. The Watts Gang Task Force was established by Janice Hahn six years ago. That task force, unbeknownst to anybody in the city, because it never gets any positive publicity, has done more for helping resolve and save lives, and that's because of one woman, and that's Janice Hahn. Now, we have what amounts to an eight- or nine-minute free campaign commercial donation by Craig Huey on Fox News. That report is viral, it is vicious, it is false, and it insults the intelligence of the people. To believe that report, you have to accept the fallacy that a gang member's word is more worthy than that of Janice Hahn. Are you kidding me, people? But you know what? When you appeal to prejudice, when you appeal to bias, when you try to divide instead of unite, that's what Huey, that's what the Tea Party in this situation represents, that's what that campaign commercial represents. It's wrong. Going forward, nobody is better qualified for this office than Janice Hahn. What she's done to empower the people is beyond question. And I got to tell you, if cavorting with gang members very quickly, I've been trying to get a little track-and-field team started in Watts for three years. You know, in order to do that, I have to talk to gang members. Why? Because I got to get them to say, you know what? Lay off my kids, lay off my program, let them compete. Does that make me, because I talk to gang members, a part of a gang, or authorizing, or somehow cajoling gang people, or embracing gang people? Obviously not. Anybody, Fox News, I challenge you. You want to learn about Watts? You go to Watts. You cover the Watts Gang Task Force. You cover, and you provide fair and balanced coverage. And you know what? Then you're giving the people really, truly, what you profess to be fair and balanced, which it is not. And as far as I'm concerned, the people listening to this commercial, listening to my commercial for Janice Hahn, because she should win, should think twice before voting for this man. And please, people, get out the vote. Thank you.
Nestor Gonzalez followed by Michael Carrion.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. It's my first time ever addressing the council on any issues. I've been a longtime resident here in Los Angeles, and here's my, I got my son Matthew Gonzalez here with me, so on his summer vacation break from school. First of all, I want to thank everyone for your support here and all the items you guys have presented throughout the years. But by far most, I want to thank Mr. Weezer. I live in the Boyle Heights community, and this year, we attended our, I think it was the third annual fireworks show that we had over there, and it was a phenomenon event. Every year, more and more people end up showing up there, and that makes me proud as a citizen of Boyle Heights, and my son loved the show. So thank you, Mr. Weezer. I applaud you for your efforts on that. But the other item I want to talk about real briefly is the MTA. We have a train station on First and Soto Street that does not have public restrooms along with other stations around our city. I would advise the council to really look at the issues that the MTA does not have restrooms for these stations, and it's causing a public nuisance around our city. In reference to Boyle Heights, I directed my concern to Mr. Leon from Chief of Staff at Boyle Heights Office, and I showed him the syringes and all the defecation of human waste there down the alley on First and Soto Street, and he said he was going to have Clean and Green possibly go down there and take care of that issue. It has not happened yet. My son plays in that alleyway often. I know that the city has got rid of that Paradise Alley project that you guys had a long time ago because of budget cuts, but we want to see if we could close on that alleyway there on First and Soto and make it a private alley for us residents there. So thank you, council members.
Michael Carrion followed by Arnold Sachs.
Joining your son, what government is all about, a staff member from my office would go talk to you to get more information, and the 4th of July fireworks shows, I used to see him as a kid. It's been over 30 years that we've had him in Boyle Heights, and that's why we brought him back. So your son, just like I did, enjoyed them when we were young people. But someone would come back and get your information, and we'll follow up on those items that you brought up. Thank you for participating.
Michael Carrion followed by Arnold Sachs.
Yeah, Michael Carrion here from 14th District. Sorry, I couldn't say I have the same experience. Lately, Mr. Weezer has been dodging me, and I'd like to know why. And I'm addressing the council here. 16 calls, and I got two calls back when I was at work. His staff doesn't call back now, so it must be hereditary. I don't know if your staff just doesn't want to talk to me, or they're afraid to deal with the issues at hand. They say they're going to do something, and then they don't do it. I tried to call you to speak to you, you refused to call. I've told Mr. Weezer before that if he doesn't call, he said the lines of communication would be open. We'd have the lines of communication open. All I had to do was call. So I called, I don't get a return call. So I show up here. I guess I got to change my schedule to what it used to be, so I can be here Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. I will have somebody listen to me, whether it's you or your staff. And I don't know, I'd like to know what happened. Where did the lines of communication stop? Why did they stop? Is it the fact that you got re-elected, and now you don't need no help from no one? It's what it seems like, because before Mr. Weezer was elected, he came and asked for our help in our community. Said he was going to do all these things. So we put our foot forward, and we re-elected him. And now, he can't even pick up the phone to call back. Now he's too busy. Now we got people coming into our 4th of July things, events that are nonprofit, that are businesses. They were supposed to be for the local community, period, for the local nonprofits, not for a private business to come in and sell their stuff and to take from the community. It was funny how, at one time, you and I were able to speak, but now, you don't even want to talk to me. So either you do talk to me, or you listen to me. That's your choice.
Our final speaker, Arnold Sachs. Mr. Weezer.
It's unfortunate I have to address this in such a public, open forum like this, but Mr. Carrion, my staff does not call you anymore. If you continue to yell at my staff, disrespect them, hang up on them, they will not call you back. They will call you back when you decide to speak with them very appropriately. You sat here for about two hours. I'm always available to anyone who wants to speak to me. You did not approach me once. You come here constantly in council. I am always open and available, so I just wanted to clear the record.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Sachs, our final speaker for this session of the city council meeting.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. Quite interesting having those members of the congregation here, having to come forward and beg for your assistance, yet I'm reminded of when the congregation of AEG shows up, you grovel like you can't get your nose out of a mud hole. It's a different standard, I guess, if you have the money to back you up, or if you're just the constituents on the poor economic standards that make up the larger population of the city of LA. And I guess politicians, that was a wonderful picture of you, Councilman Zion, in the newspaper, and I was wondering what you were reading or looking at, and then I figured it out. Did you decide on the jelly or the custard donut on the menu that you were looking at? And the choice for the politician, it's really tough, because this is another election where you have zero choice, two zeros, two bags of rocks. What are you going to do? A 10-year politician who's done minimal amount of work, or a newcomer who's done no work, this is really tough. And the area to be represented is liberal winning, but conservative run, very high defense contracting, very high on government, non-involvement. It's said that Jane Harmon was the Republicans' best friend in that area because she endorsed a lot of defense spending. We'll hear a lot, we need to port, 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 but the rest of the things, and in today's Daily Breeze, they said, there was an article, Janice Hahn is the answer. If that's the answer, we're in trouble.
For the record, I gave up donuts for croissant, for the record. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to arrive at noon on July 19 due to city business. That meets council policy.
That's approved.
Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused on July 27 for city business. That meets council policy.
And that's approved.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, colleagues? Mr. Labons, I'm sure you have an announcement.
I'd just say it's a great weekend to enjoy all things Southern California and Los Angeles, and have a great weekend, everybody.
You know what next weekend is? Carmageddon.
Oh, no. Well, it's going to be good. It's going to work.
Carmageddon, coming next Friday. Mr. Alarcon, you have a puzzled look, Mr. Alarcon.
I actually have a real announcement.
A real announcement, okay.
I'd like to, just a small event in the district. The Total Family Support Clinic will be having a ribbon-cutting to expand their facilities. This organization provides substance abuse and mental health treatment, parenting and domestic violence classes. So there's going to be a whole series of events from 11 o'clock to 3:45 at 13788 Foothill Boulevard in Silmar. This organization is doing a lot of good work with a lot of people who need support, and so I hope we get a lot of people to come out.
Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? I have one tomorrow morning from 9 till 2 at the CDI, it's a health fair and free screening for youth, 9 to 2, at the CDI Early Learning Center at 7260 Owens' Mouth in Canoga Park. That is tomorrow from 9 to 2, health fair and free screening for the youth. See, no other announcements?
Who'll be there? Oh.
Do we have, Mr. Alarcon? Did you have announcements? No? Journey motions? Anyone have a journey motions? We have a journey motions. Please stand for journey motions. Ms. Hahn, a journey motion.
I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Vince Matera, who passed away at the age of 75. Vince's love for cooking motivated him to open a pizzeria shortly after starting his family. He had no knowledge of how to run that business, but with hard work and determination, Sorrento's Italian Restaurant has been open for almost 50 years in San Pedro. It's quite a landmark. I frequent it many times. It's very close to where I live. He had a true love for life, but most of all, his love for his family was eternal. He survived by his wife of 49 years, Angie, children Susan, Vince Jr., and Renee, brother John, and grandchildren Melissa, Sabrina, Nicolette, Natalie, Noel, and Matthew, Vanessa, and Gennaro, along with many nieces and nephews. His funeral services will take place Friday, oh, that's today, July 8, at 10 a.m., so it's happening this morning at Holy Trinity Catholic Church. And I'd also like us to adjourn in the memory of a longtime community advocate in the community of Watts, Edna Alawine, who passed away at the age of 90. She was a native Angelina who lived in the Watts Wilbrook community for 83 years. Edna served on the original Watts Community Redevelopment Agency's Advisory Committee, which implemented the construction of the Martin Luther King Jr. Shopping Center. She was also the founder of the Watts Chamber of Commerce and the promenade of Promenade's Walk of Fame in Watts, an organization known as Community Beautiful Corporation. She was appointed to the Women's Rights Commission by my father, and was involved in developing the Los Angeles County Nursing Assistance Program, and Vice President of King Drew Auxiliary, founder of the Fine Arts Democratic Study Club, and member of the Democratic State Central Committee. She will always be remembered for her lifelong dedication to the betterments of the Watts Wilbrook community. She was always sort of the emcee and host of the Watts Christmas Parade every year. I can't imagine the community of Watts without Edna Alawine. She just really was Watts. She was the spirit of Watts, just one of the most loving and beautiful women you would ever hope to know. She survived by her three daughters, Marcia, Paula, and Will Nora. She had eight grandchildren, she had 14 great-grandchildren, and she had one great-great-grandchild. Her services are going to be Monday at 11 at Praises of Zion Baptist Church in Los Angeles. One more. Bob Gomez passed away at the age of 60. He was born in Arizona, but he considered himself a native of San Pedro. He had an effervescent personality. He was always cheerful and charming, popular, and a loyal friend. At Dana Junior High School, he exemplified leadership and responsibility, and was a member of the esteemed Commodore Service Club. This aspect of his character continued at San Pedro High School, where he was a conscientious student, an outstanding athlete on the football team, and the senior class president of the summer of 1968 class. He was a loving son who called his mother daily, think about Tom Labons when I say that, and told her she was both mother and father to him, his mother having been widowed when he was a young child. He survived by two of his daughters, Christine and Candace, three grandchildren, Drake, Valentina, and Kingston, his mother, Marie Katnick, and his brothers Frank, Joe, and Terry Katnich. His services will be held July 10 at 3 p.m. at Hope Chapel in San Pedro.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Labons.
Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of John Mackey, NFL Hall of Fame, Baltimore Colt, who redefined the position of tight end, played 10 years with the Colts, a year with the Chargers, and also in the last few years brought to forefront the plight of professional athletes in football, lived with dementia for over 10 years, survived by his wife, the great John Mackey. And also, members, a great Angelino passed, born in Los Angeles, was the granddaughter of William Mahalan, Catherine Mahalan. And just on Wednesday, when we were here, I was going through my paper, because I moved my chair from the great west side of the council chambers to the fine east side of the council chambers, and I found this note that Catherine had sent me. As we all do, have the pleasure of meeting great people, but you meet great people who have history in Los Angeles, the Sepulveda family that lives off of Division Street in Glasso Park, other families that you meet who have great history here is very special. But Catherine Mahalan truly was special. She was an author who wrote and defined what she felt was the correction of how she saw her grandfather, which is tremendous, the immigrant story of a man not trained as an engineer who came to Los Angeles and worked for the Los Angeles Water District, which later formed the Department of Water Power and the new city charter in '25. She spoke a lot at community events, worked with the Department of Water Power, and got out, and she was involved with many activities that we coordinated in our office. At a St. Patrick's Day parade where Mr. Zion was on his big motorcycle, so was Peter Fonda, and I got the fun opportunity to introduce Peter Fonda from the great Fonda family to Catherine Mahalan, the great Mahalan family. It is great to see their eyes meet. She lived to be 88. She is survived by her children, her three children, and she truly was an inspiration. And I loved her. I talked to her, I talked to her three weeks ago, and she went to heaven from Camarillo. A graduate of Canoga Park High in Berkeley, a writer, just a wonderful woman, Catherine Mahalan. I ask you all to join me in that.
All members, I had an opportunity to meet Catherine Mahalan, just a wonderful lady. Did you say, Mr. Labons? All members on that. Colleagues, any other turning motions? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. This completes this council. This completes this council meeting this week, and we wish you a happy weekend. We will return next Tuesday, signing off from LA City Hall.